Council, we're, uh, administrative session is now called to order. Let us stand, please.
Glory will lead us in the prayer. And I'll be here as in the pledge.
Let us pray. Our gracious, kind heavenly Father, we give you thanks for this day. God, we pray for this city and for its people. God, will you bless us? Please hold us and keep us through this year. And help this council, oh God, as we go forth that we may have wisdom and knowledge. We give you all glory and thanks in Jesus' fully name. Amen.
Amen.
Please join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And the clerk, please call the roll. President.
Mr. Jefferson.
Here.
Mr. Jacob.
Present.
Mr. Harbin.
Present.
Mr. Flory.
Present.
Mr. Bullock.
Thank you. Tomorrow, we will approve the minutes of the administrative conference as well as council meeting of December 18th and 21st. This time, are there any recognitions of awards, distinguished guests?
I'm sorry, I've got to get used to pushing the cue button again.
No, that's fine. I have councilman Corbin first.
I think it just hasn't been, it hasn't been reset yet.
Okay. We'll work that out. We'll just do verbal because I know the seating arrangement has been changed. We'll be okay.
Thank you. I was just briefly going to say, I just want to express a congratulations to all of the elected officials who were sworn in today, including our governor and our cattle parish and state officials that were all sworn in today. So, very good.
Any other councilman? Councilperson? Let me also just acknowledge that I was at the, at the swearing in of the parish commission today, and it was a room full of, of, you know, the county, I mean, the commissioners as well as their families and friends who was here to wish them well. I spoke with most of them this morning, and hopeful that we can continue to work together to make not only federal parish, but Shreveport and a whole, you know, a better place to live. I also want to acknowledge and express my appreciation to this body for this opportunity to serve as your chair this year. I'm looking forward to it. I want to repeat that I'm not, Councilman Emerson, Councilman Emerson led us well as chair, you know, kept us focused, and I think he did outstanding job, and I just want to express my appreciation to you, sir.
Thank you so much.
As well as all of us, so. There are no other recognitions or expressions than, is there any communication from the mayor?
Not at this time, Mr. Chair.
All righty. Now to reports, private standard, if I have any, any questions? Mr. Secretary, you have any, anything you want to report? Thank you, sir. Revenue collection, we did receive that. I know we received the Cureda Bond supportive report. As to plan committee, where are we on that? I saw Mr. Secretary earlier. I'm sorry?
I think it was the second meeting.
Oh, it's the second meeting? Okay. Help me out.
Yeah.
You're going to?
Okay. Yeah, here's what else I have.
Okay. You see, I got my distinguished former chair next to my left so he can help direct me. Okay, we're good to go. Are there, I didn't have any public hearings for anything on the agenda today?
Yeah, there are a couple.
I mean, public?
Comments?
Well, go ahead with the hearings.
We have, tomorrow, we'll have two public hearings on annexation ordinances, 120 and 121.
Okay. Thank you. Any items to be added to the agenda today?
On your electronic agenda, there's one item, but I think we put that on in there, and we will take it off. Is that correct?
Yeah, I don't, I don't think we need to add it to the agenda.
But we will, it will not be on there tomorrow.
Okay.
So, we don't have anything to add at this point.
Okay. In regards to public comments, this, none. And I know confirmations and appointments. I, I received something regarding that.
It's on the clerk's report, but none that can be adopted tomorrow under the rules.
Okay. All right, now, we are at, any public comments or remarks? Can we go to the agenda?
I don't think that we have any.
Okay, we're going to get out of here early, man.
Keep on going.
Okay. Crawford?
Yes, sir. Consent agenda legislation to introduce routine ordinances and resolution. Resolution number one declares certain city property to be surplus property, authorizing the donation of the property to the cattle parish school board. Resolution number two, authorizing the use of certain equipment by sports spectrum race management. Resolution three ratifies the use of certain equipment by the crew of Harambe to otherwise provide respect there too. Resolution number four, ratifying the use of certain equipment by the crew of Sobek.
Okay, are there any? Again, I guess I'm looking at some of, council lady, did you? Okay.
I wanted to, um, I think the resolution one, I wanted to have that removed from consent. I had sent a request with additional information, and I don't think I got a response, so I'd like to pull that one from consent.
From resolution one, you want to pull that from consent.
Is anybody registering on the mic?
From resolution one, from the consent agenda.
Yes, the mic's on. Okay. That's the school board donation? I would object to that. I have right hand.
I just have a question about, if I can get a response, it's not, it's just removing it from consent, not from the agenda itself, but, yeah, we're still going to vote on it and what have you, but just not under consent.
Okay.
Is that based on the email that you sent?
Yes.
I talked to Tanya, and she didn't get you what you needed?
I don't, I don't see a problem with it. I mean, we're going to vote on it, so we'll, you know, if she wants to second.
We'll remove it and try to get the information that she wants.
Thank you. Any other resolution that needs discussion? And, Ms. Crawford, if you could get council lady the information she's desiring?
Absolutely. I'd be glad to answer any questions that she has at the time it's brought up.
Thank you.
Or beforehand.
Okay, you may continue, sir.
To adopt resolutions and ordinances, resolution number five suspends the effects of certain provisions of chapter 10 and chapter 106 of the City of Shreveport Code of Ordinances relative to the tailgate party for the Super Bowl Sunday football game. Resolution number six suspending the effects of certain provisions of chapter 10 and chapter 106 of the City of Shreveport Code of Ordinances relative to the Mardi Gras pre-party. Resolution seven suspends the effects of certain sections of chapter 10 of the Code of Ordinances relative to alcoholic beverages at Mardi Gras parades. Resolution eight suspends certain provisions of chapter 10 and chapter 106 of the Code of Ordinances relative to the sale, dispensing, and consumption of alcoholic beverages at the Grand Ref Brewing for the rafters kick luncheon party April 16, 2016.
Okay. Any questions, discussion regarding these?
Yeah, I have just one request for Shelley to, if she could send me a copy, you may have done this, but I tried to look for it the other day, of the contract with us and the crews in regard to parade routes. I want to know when it expires. I didn't think it was going to be an issue this year because I thought the King's Highway project was going to determine that it wasn't going to work out, but since it hadn't kicked off yet, I'd rather be, you know, armed appropriately.
Yeah, Lou Burnett's already contacted you.
Like I said, I thought we were out of the woods this year, but that project just keeps taking a little longer to get started.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Jefferson.
Thank you. I was just going to say, on this resolution eight, I think we left off a word in the title that doesn't really change what it is, but this is, what it is, is a suspension of the chapter 10 for an event that's at Great Ref Brewing, and it's the Shreveport Raptors kickoff launch party. And the Raptors are the new soccer team, local soccer team, and they're doing a sort of a family-friendly kind of event there, but it is a brewery, so we had to have this on there. So, just as an explanation of what that was, I just want to let you all know. The other things are obviously all pertaining to Mardi Gras, and I didn't necessarily write them, but they are in my district, so if you have questions, just let me know. I'd be happy to get an answer for you.
Okay, thank you. And I know that in Mardi Gras season, we're going to be getting a lot of inquiries and requests regarding assistance in those areas.
Yes, Mr. Jefferson, were we supposed to add something to the?
Oh, I think just the word "off." Now, it says the Raptors Kick Launch Party, which is cute for soccer, just the kick part. Yeah, exactly right. Maybe it was the theme, but.
Any other questions, discussions regarding, but no. If not, you may continue, sir.
Thank you. Regular agenda legislation, these are resolutions on second reading and final passage, or which will require only one reading. Resolution nine accepts the dedication of a 10-foot-wide water line servitude in North Star Baptist Church Unit Two. Resolution 10 supports the completion of Interstate 49 through an intercity connector.
Okay, any discussion regarding these resolutions? I will say that, I'm sorry.
No problem. Yeah, I was just going to basically say what I'd said before, but if you may have something to say already?
Yeah, I was going to, I was going to say that I spoke with several people today, including some of my cohorts, and I'm going to tomorrow postpone the, taking up this resolution number 10. So, but we will keep it there, but I'm going to postpone it for tomorrow's active action. Okay? Any other comments? No, you may continue, sir.
Introduction of resolutions not to be adopted prior to January 26, 2016. Resolution 11 amends the agreement between the City of Shreveport and the State Fair of Louisiana and Ed Campbell Concessions Company. Resolution 12 authorizes the mayor to execute a donation agreement between the City of Shreveport and Shreveport Development Corporation herein called the owner, and acting herein through Donnie Juno, president of the private water and sewer main extensions and relative facilities to serve Beenville Path Unit Six in 12 Oaks. Resolution 13 authorizes the mayor to execute a donation agreement between the City of Shreveport and Wallace Lake Development LLC herein called the owner, and acting herein through Whit Carruthers, manager for the private water and sewer main extensions and relative facilities to serve St. Andrews Subdivision Unit Two. Resolution 14 authorizes the mayor to execute a donation agreement between the City of Shreveport and Southern Home Builders herein called the owners, and acting therein through Lino Andrina, manager for the private water and sewer main extension and relative facilities to serve Newcastle Unit 14B. Resolution 15 authorizes the mayor to execute a donation agreement between the City of Shreveport and Southern Home Builders hereafter called owner, and acting therein through Lino Andri, Andriani, thank you, manager for the private water and sewer main extensions and relative facilities to serve Newcastle Unit 14C.
Okay, thank you. Are there any comments, discussions regarding these resolutions? Yes, sir.
The, is there a map on the St. Andrews one? I see the thing that says "map." Does anybody have a map on it? Or Mike, did you ever, I mean, I'm assuming it's in your district, but.
If there's not one attached, we can certainly provide one to you.
Yeah.
I was seeing if there was one attached to a document.
I, I could be missing it, but I couldn't, I just didn't know where it was.
Yeah.
Was my real, I mean, you know, where in the city.
It's right there off of.
Wallace Lake.
Wallace Lake, on the north side of Southern Trace.
It's on the, is it on the east side or the west side of Wallace Lake?
The west side. East side of Wallace Lake, but it's on the west end of Southern Trace.
No, okay, okay. What's, there's like one, I have some friends who are one of the two or three people that live in that neighborhood now. There's only a few houses there, but I know somebody who lives on, Lock Navar is the name of the street? Is that it?
Okay. Any other discussion? Ms. Crawford, you may continue.
Introduction of ordinances not to be adopted prior to January 26, 2016. Ordinance one amends the 2016 general fund budget. Ordinance number two amends and reenacts portion of chapter 90 of the Code of Ordinances relative to parking in residential yards.
Any discussion? Mr. Crawford, regarding ordinance one.
Yes, sir.
Can you give me some clarification on?
I can. That's $1.5 million that was left from the 2015 budget, specifically in the general fund and public works line item for concrete panel replacement. We were hoping to encumber that money before the end of the year as part of the mayor's 2016 streets plan, but we were unable to do that, so all we're asking the council to do is to move that money from the 2015 into the 2016 budget into the same line item, concrete panel replacement, public works won't be used for anything else other than streets.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Thank you very much. Any other questions or discussion? Okay, thank you. You may continue, sir.
Ordinances on second reading and final passage as numbers are assigned, ordinance numbers. Ordinance 117 amends and reenacts article seven, division four of chapter 90 of the Code of Ordinances relative to parking meters and parking meter technology. Ordinance 118 amends and reenacts certain provisions of chapter 10 and chapter 78 of the Code of Ordinances relative to consumption of alcoholic beverages on sidewalks adjacent to certain premises. Ordinance 119 amends ordinance number 108 of 2015, adopted on November 24, 2015, amending the designation of the paying agent, amending the title of the ordinance, and providing for other matters in connection therein. Ordinance 120 is an annexation ordinance, tag number 15-05, an ordinance to enlarge the limits and boundaries of the City of Shreveport, the property located at 9475 Elrby Road, located in section eight, T16 North, R13 West, Cattle Parish, Louisiana. Ordinance 121 is an annexation tag number 1504, an ordinance to enlarge the limits and the boundaries of the City of Shreveport, the property located at the intersection of Elrby Road and Fluenol Lucas Road, located in section eight, T16 North and R13 West, Cattle Parish, Louisiana. Ordinance 122 amends the 2016 capital improvements budget. Ordinance three declares a public emergency in connection with the replacement of a 30-inch sewer main located at 3201 Judy Court, approximately 15 feet below the Vicom Bayou, and ratifying the expenditure of approximately $40,273.08. Ordinance 113 is a zoning ordinance, C-75-15, an ordinance amending chapter 106 of the Code of Ordinances, the City of Shreveport zoning ordinances by rezoning property located in the northeast corner of Hearn Avenue and Virginia Avenue, Shreveport, Cattle Parish, Louisiana, from B1 buffer business district to B3 community business district with site plan approval. Ordinance 123 is zoning, C-101-15, an ordinance amending chapter 106 of the Code of Ordinances, the City of Shreveport zoning ordinances by rezoning property located on the northeast corner of Sycamore Street and Laurel Street, Shreveport, Cattle Parish, Louisiana, from R3 urban multifamily residential district to B1 buffer business district with site plan approval. Ordinance 124 is zoning, C-109-15, an ordinance amends chapter 106 of the Code of Ordinances, the City of Shreveport zoning ordinances by rezoning property located 155 feet south of 5 Oaks Drive, Shreveport, Cattle Parish, LA, from R1D urban one-family residential district to B3 community business district with site plan approval.
Okay, I see several questions speak. I'm going to start with council lady.
I have a question on 122. Were these, the BKI and environment systems, were those both bids, or how did that come about?
Are you talking about the airport ordinance on one?
No.
Well, the same, that's the, there's an airport amendment on the.
On 122, there's an amendment.
Supplement with BKI for the management of professional assessment services and the supplement with compliance environment systems for assessment work. These are all consent decree projects, I think.
Where are we going to turn?
122.
This is the, yeah, this is allocating all of their bond money. I'm not sure specifically.
Department of Engineering and Environmental Services.
Yeah, I'm going to have Autumn come up here. Robert is.
It does seem like the amendment doesn't say anything to do with the.
Yeah, that's what I'm looking for, trying to.
Both were originally selected through A and E selection. Proposals were taken, BKI and CES. Was that the question?
Uh huh. Okay.
Okay, well, I'll ask it differently then. It appears that the ordinance itself, when I pull up the ordinance, it talks about changing money from one water and sewer project to another.
This is just to expend the dollars that were just recently sold in the 2015 bond sale for water and sewer revenue. So, these are continued projects, we're just adding more money to the projects.
Okay, and then the amendment has to do with an airport thing?
That's correct.
Am it supposed to?
Yeah, the, the amendment is strictly to the airport and providing the funding that is available, because it was, it was pushed through in a, in a block of money. We're just designating in the capital project exactly where the money's coming from.
They both amend the capital improvements budget.
I got you, though, that, so. Unrelated, other than. Unrelated, other than they're both capital. It was already structured and an amendment was added.
That's correct.
Okay, got you. I, it's not water and sewer that's doing the capital improvement for the airport, obviously.
Obviously not.
Any other questions?
Are we clear?
And let me ask this, why is it an amendment? Because originally, it just had the other thing up there, and then when we realized we wanted to add this on, we then decided to do as an amendment?
I think the original document listed the money conceptually as one, one tag, as $1.34 million and $21. This just breaks it up into the capital project to show that $1 million is coming from the Shreveport Airport Authority, $314,021 is coming from Express Jet. Prior to this amendment, it all showed it going in as one lump sum, as $1.3 million, and then the additional dollars coming from the airport.
Okay. Are we clear?
Does that answer your question, Mr. Jacob?
With that being rude, I meant, I'm not sure it helps, because, I mean, I guess somebody's going to be smart enough to say, hey, I want to know about the water projects, and then they're going to pull up the amendment, and they're going to see an airport project, and they're going to be all like, what it?
Well, I don't remember the chronology, but the only reason for doing it is you can then do the airport project in one reading because it's a capital project.
I assumed that was the strategy, to avoid advertising it twice, or whatever, but.
And the late, the delay.
I got you. Okay. I mean, I think they're both valid, I'm not debating the.
Merits of.
Merits of each, it just seems, I'm not in the accounting and part of the world, so I'm more, I'm more with it.
All righty. Thank you.
Thank you, Autumn.
Are there any other?
I was, I was just going to mention, ordinance 118, that was one that we discussed briefly at the last Public Safety Committee meeting, and we do need additional input from the state, so we are going to be postponing that, at least to the next meeting. If we haven't heard anything back from them, we may postpone it even longer than that, because.
You want to table it?
Yeah, I wouldn't mind doing that. I mean, I have no opposition to tabling it. You know, we just, we're looking for some additional information, and we don't know the timeframe on it, so I'm comfortable either postponing or.
Now, the parking meter, ordinance.
Are you, are you, are we clear on?
I think we're ready to roll with that, huh? Do we have a few details we're still?
There were a couple of questions that needed to be answered, but I could probably get with you tomorrow and make sure we have a final draft that covers everything.
Great.
Yeah, I mean, I think we can get that taken care of before we vote tomorrow, but there's just a couple of small questions that we want to make sure include in there, but I think that'll be.
Ready.
Okay. And 123, we spoke on that on the previous meeting, and that's just to, to get the old Laurel Street building properly zoned, you know, it's been a school, now they use multiple purposes for other purposes, but it was out of, without the proper zoning, so I solicited your, your support on that ordinance, okay? All righty. Yes, sir.
Do you have me? I thought I put, okay. The Vicom Bayou, are we sure that's really second reading? It's not second reading, it's a emergency funding requ, yeah, that's a project. So, shouldn't it be up in the section that's ordinance on second reading or final passage, which will require only one reading?
That's where it is, I think.
No, it's under.
No, it's on second reading, final passage.
It is the first reading of it, but it's, the ordinance declares a public emergency, and I believe.
There's, Mr. Chairman, there's not a category for ordinances which require only one reading. That's under resolutions. This is done as an emergency ordinance. It probably could have been done as a resolution. What it's accomplishing is allowing, the city had to do the repairs, there were sewer repairs, it's obviously an emergency, and they don't have to strictly follow the bid law. It's below the contract limit on the bid law, but technically, they have to get, I think, quotes if they're below the contract limit, but this had to be done immediately. And so, the purpose of the legislation is to comply with the state law that allows you to not cross every T when you have an emergency. It could probably have been a resolution, but I think we've done them as ordinances all these years, so that's, it's just an unusual situation.
Enough, Seth.
Okay, can I ask you, in this attorney, the language, and I think we want to be consistent in, as we schedule our agenda and using the right language, would it be more advantageous if we was to suspend the rules and did a one read on this?
I think it fits the.
The charter.
The category of, yeah, the charter does allow for emergency ordinances, so I think it really fits, it's just unusual.
This is where we've couched them before, when the rare occasion does come up.
Okay.
Right.
But that's consistent? If we do it that way.
It's consistent with the charter.
Okay, that's all I need to know. Are there anything else, Mr. Crawford?
That's all for me.
All for you, okay, thank you. Are there any table legislation?
I don't think we have any, Mr. Chairman.
Appeals? We have any property standard appeals? I don't see any.
Not today.
Wait a minute.
Keep it rolling, I like your momentum, Chairman. Let's not get stuck right here. Let's keep it going, we got a few more.
I do, I do need to, because we all, we all property standards. Mr. Green, can you just come in for a second? Mr. Crawford, it's okay.
I mean, I was so.
We're moving, we're moving in a few minutes, though. I mean, I was starting smiling already.
We had momentum to.
Momentum. And I think the clerk forwarded you some of, some of the properties that I. Yes, sir. That, concerns about. You are aware that we had several fires. Yes, sir. Vacated and. 1600 Block Avanna Street. How can we expedite getting those properties?
They were already in the process. We're waiting on the word from Chief Wolverton to see if the investigation part of it is over with. They're at the point now, we're giving them to a contractor as soon as he gives us the work.
Yes, my question is, and I appreciate that answer, but my question is, there are, I mean, just, just a mass of those type of structures that's just, I think we're waiting for something to happen. How, how are you addressing those backlogs of, of dilapidated properties that has been cited for whatever violation and are ready for demolition? Are we moving exponentially in demolition, in the demolition phase of what we have on the books?
Yes, yes. I mean, everything is just going through the process, just, these just so happen to be at that point in the process where we're ready to contract them out, so all of them are moving through at the same, pretty much the same pace, and we're handling all the same.
Hold one second, let me ask the clerk. clerk, can I ask you, we received a letter from Mr. Williams. Are you familiar with, everybody familiar with Mr. Williams? I think he was in your district.
I am familiar with him.
Anna May.
Anna May wrote this. Did you receive this?
I mean, you're really not going to bring that out, are you?
No, what I want to know is, in a case that we get a letter. No, what I wanna know is, uh, in a case that we get a letter like this, what would be the proper procedure of disposing it? Is it disposed?
I'm under the impression that he's trying to appeal it in, in, in court.
Well, the council has already taken action on it and his next appeal would be to.
Now, is he not appealing it in first J D C and this is his way of trying to appeal it without appealing it? I don't know. And I don't think it's a good choice for us to be bringing it up if we've already.
Well, I mean, again, I, I, we don't have to act on it, I, I got the letter and he, he's, he's addressed the letter to the council, council people. I just wanted to know, is it disposed of or is there any recourse from this body? That's all I'm asking.
His, his next.
Miss, Assistant Attorney.
The council's taking action, he has thirty days to appeal to the First Judicial District Court. If he does not appeal or take action within those thirty days, then the administration has priority to move forward demolition. If that's what was ordered by the council.
This is not a demolition issue.
What is this?
This, this is one of those, when the trash, I mean, removing all the, uh. All the, uh.
It's a fee that we charged him for removing.
I haven't seen the letter, so.
Okay, I'm sorry.
No, no, he's the guy that came up here about, we had a bunch of trash in his front yard and we got rid of it for him and he says that we overcharged him.
Did, did he take any action towards the First Judicial District Court? Take any kind of appeal after?
Was he directed to that, to that process? He was directed to that process, okay? And so, I mean, I, I'm not asking for any recourse here, I'm just asking that he sent it back to us. If he was properly notified about his, his, his options, then, okay, we're good with that.
Right, correct.
But my question now, I'm sorry.
I, if you'll yield this now.
I will yield.
The question I had on that is this, uh, there was this agreement with the number of loads that was hauled. And what I'm saying, when we get a letter like this, uh, somebody, even though, and we're not taking action, but somebody needs to write a letter and say, look, you have to take your next step to the district court. We don't just leave it and not answer or say anything unless you tell us, Mr. Bradford, that we're in a lawsuit and we're not to speak. Uh, but, you know, what I'm saying, somebody somewhere should say, Mr. Williams, you have had your hearing and it was not successful, then you need to take your next step. This man here's letter is that saying that he feels like that he has not received justice. And that's what this is all about.
And I would like an opportunity to review the letter, because you'll send it to me and provide me an opportunity to review it and I can provide a response that I think will be appropriate for the council as well.
Thank you, uh, Attorney, while you're here, and I sent, um, when I went to review these burn houses on Anna, sixteen hundred block of Anna, I did, I, um. I saw debris that was almost equal to what this gentleman, the Williams gentleman had on his property. I mean, it's horrible. And I spoke to the director, Mr. Green, and, and I, he, he explained, he gave me some explanation, but it doesn't make sense, only the fact that this guy continually to pout junk on the site. He said, you know, it's being processed through the courts and da-da, but I mean, but if he cited several times, I mean, there, there, there comes a time, it appears to me that he should not be allowed to put that junk in there anymore.
Well, I think part of the process is, you know, once it goes to the city court, it's made it to city court, then there's a lot of discretion that's afforded to the judges. And so, they impose the penalties that are afforded to them under law. Once we prosecute the docket from our office's perspective, the judge has the ultimate decision as to the severity of punishment that's, that's applied to the defendant. Now, again, this is a situation that I need to become familiar with as far as the actual procedure that's occurred now, but we are afforded the opportunity to go to city court and prosecute those violations that have been cited by property standards or by permits or by any other authority within the administration that has the ability to cite.
And I understand, Green, from your statement, that he has been cited several times and, and that he has been rendered to remove that junk and then he put it back over again.
I said that we have removed the junk by court order.
You have removed the junk.
Yes. We have.
And he continues to, to put it there.
Yes.
I mean, I mean, that's enough.
It's new stuff, it's not the same stuff. We take it, we place a lien on the property, he can, he pays his liens and when he goes out to scrap and whatnot, we've even had a, SPD had a vehicle removed from the property. So, we're addressing him, but I can't make the courts either lock him up or do what have you. We're doing what we need to do to address it.
Well, I, I, I hear you and, and speaking with the neighbors, uh, I have the question whether or not that is new junk, because I'm, because I'm looking at junk that, I'm not gonna debate you. All I'm saying is that it seems to me that there should be a time in continual habitual violations of city codes and ordinances that that would not occur. Something, somewhere down the road, there should be something that should stop that.
Chairman, that may be an issue that if it's pervasive, we need to address from a legislative perspective and perhaps provide some additional guidance or authority to the court under the criminal ordinances for municipal violations. That's an option that we can look at, it may be an option that we should take up maybe in the next Property Standards Committee meeting, um, to see if that's an issue that we can address that way. But we are bound within the scope of what the law provides for us as prosecutors as well as under property standards. So, I, I understand your concern, I'd, I'd like some time to look at that and perhaps get some proposed legislation that may make Peter habitual offenders provide additional punishments for them. So, I don't know if that's possible, but it's something that we can look at.
Certainly, I'm gonna email you, I mean, forward you whatever I've approved forward to everybody else, but, uh, and my only concern, this is my last statement on that, is that we, Mr. Williams is. And others are being penalized for something that, that we're allowing them to continue for this gentleman, and that doesn't seem something that's in the interest of the city, to be inconsistent, that much inconsistency.
Understood, okay.
Thank you very.
Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Okay, uh. Alcohol beverage appeals. We have tomorrow, Mr. Thompson.
We have one appeal for tomorrow's special exception use, City Realty LLC, fifty-six nineteen Hearn Avenue. It's in Mrs. Lynch's, Ms. Lynch's district.
Okay. Now, I saw, uh, ordinance one thirteen, how are those related and how do we, can we deal with those?
One is zoning and one is special exception use.
Are they?
Related to the same property.
Same property. But that's, that's, that, we can do one thirteen without going into the public, I mean, to the appeal process?
Yes, one is just a regular ordinance. And it has been postponed so that it comes up at the same time that the appeal on a special exception, the same council meeting.
Okay.
Come up together.
And again, I'm just asking for information, if we approve one thirteen, does that have any effect on the appeal?
Mr. Chairman, maybe I can help with that.
Thank you.
Um, the Z B A, uh, decision, which is the one that you're looking at now, that's at the bottom.
Yes.
Actually, one of the stipulations is, was, um, that the city council approved the rezoning to B three. So, the, you know, you need the B three first and then on top of that, you would add the approval for the alcohol. So, it does make sense to consider one thirteen first, do you want to rezone this to B three? But you may also have in mind, then, once we do that, are we going to also approve or disapprove the alcohol? So, you can have B three without the alcohol, but the way they worded this, you need to be three before the alcohol becomes approvable.
Okay, that's fine, we'll do it like that. Are there any other, uh, discussions regarding any, uh, gen item? If not, uh. There's no other appeals, taxi, or appeal, appeal, so we go to, uh, reports from offices, offices and committees, are there any? I will say, and I sent you an email earlier, uh, this month regarding, um, committee appointments, there will be some changes. I asked that you, those especially chair, chairperson, to continue chairing your committee. I, I want continuity and I want, you know, pretty much, uh, deal with any, any items that are pending, and I think there are some, you know, in some areas. But you will be getting, before our next meeting, not tomorrow meeting, but the next meeting, last meeting of the month, some assignments, new, new committee assignments, I trust you'll be receptive to those, uh, assignments, okay? All righty, um. As the former chair would say, we're down to, uh, what we've been waiting with bitted breath. But anyway, let's hear from our distinguished clerk.
Uh, we received appointments from the mayor concerning the director of public works. Mr. Michael Wood has been appointed and for assistant city engineer, Andy A. Glasgow.
Okay, great, those are great appointments, uh.
And those will be on the agenda for confirmation at the next meeting.
Okay, only twenty-six. Yes. Okay, uh, again, you all received those, uh, their resumes and their backgrounds, so I, I trust you have read those and will be prepared to, uh, confirm those, uh, those gentlemen. Okay, there's a quick meeting, so we're gonna now, see if we have any additional communications from, uh, administration?
None at this time.
Okay. Any, uh, communication from the council members?
Say briefly, Councilman Epperson.
Good first meeting. Keep us on the road.
No, I would imagine that Councilman Lynch said, at least we shit you up, I forget the chair.
They were amazed to be seen.
But anyway, I think we've had a good meeting. I, I, I want to ask again, uh, Mr. Crawford, and it occurred to me when I was riding down two twenty last week that there was, uh, cutting crews out there, cutting, at this stage of, you know, in December, they, they was cutting the right of ways.
Sure.
And I noticed that there are some right of ways, I mean, we hadn't had any winter, we had no frost to kill anything, no vegetation, hardly. And I saw some areas of town that, that probably need, uh, some addressing. Are, are crews out doing any type of cutting at this stage?
You wanna come up, Mike, and address that? I know that they're still out there cutting those areas that have started to grow again, as you mentioned. We didn't have much or have not had much of a winter, it was just a, a, a deep fall, I think. And so, there are some areas of town, because of the rain that we've gotten, they've started to grow and I've noticed it as well. So, Mike, you wanna address that?
Uh, yes, we're trying to, uh, we're trying to get back on our cycles now, it looks like, like I said, we hadn't had much winter.
Sure.
And, uh, not much grass is dying, so, yeah, we'll, we'll go back to our, our regular mowing schedules.
Okay.
We'll treat it just like it's summertime until it stops to grow.
Is that gonna be about our, uh, uh, cutting, uh, budget? And, and, and Alan Ream and I brought that up, is that if we don't address it now, then the undergrowth is gonna come so that it's gonna be hard to, 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 to recover and then start maintaining it on a very, you know, neat and, and, uh, room weight. So, I, we need to do that. But I didn't wanna.
We're back on our, we're, we're back on our mowing cycles and our ditch cleaning cycles, we're trying to, trying to keep that up so that we won't have any issues later.
Right? That's all I need now. Yes, sir.
And one of the things that Mayor Tyler's emphasized this year, because of the torrential rain we got last year.
Yes.
We got behind and it seemed like we never caught up until the summer when everything just started dying.
Right.
After a while, so, and that is getting the crews to, to stay on top of things before they do get out of hand this year. And make sure that those cycles do get started as early as possible. We're, we're gonna end up getting some rain, as this is our rainy season, but certainly try and, and take care of as much of that as we can while it's dry.
Good, okay, thank you.
I appreciate that.
Got any, uh, comments from council members? Any other communications? I didn't receive any public comments forms, I guess we won't have any public comments at this time. I'm anticipating some for tomorrow. If I just told me to hit this thing and say we are jarring, so we are jarring.